Or we can still contract out now if all of a sudden this pro sweep comes back and says you guys are asking for too damn much. You know, at that point. Do we have to, you know, bite the bullet and get a street sweeper?
Oh, let me go ahead.
I'm curious as to the lifetime of a sweet, of a street sweeper. So like twenty years, you're paying ten thousand dollars a year to own it. And you're paying fourteen thousand dollars a year to hire somebody out.
Useful life or equipment like that would be as much your own. Before it depreciates out, maybe about ten, twelve years. Um, sometimes communities will be aggressive with replacing the equipment to where they procure the equipment. Use it for a few years and replace it and their costs are pretty low because. When we buy equipment typically it's cheaper than what you can from like somebody in general public or contractor or somebody. And. They're your, your basic keep your maintenance costs pretty minimal, your change in oil and process and things like that.
It's like that should be part of a consideration for part of the discussion if you're paying two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars yourself. And that's my last ten years and that means you're paying more out of pocket than you're going to hire the fifteen thousand dollars a year.
So that fifteen thousand is like said, city was a lot smaller because we're growing, then I'm going to do anything. And to say you could do this, set the money aside and you can have a deeper conversation with your day or another time.
Right.
Yeah, that.
I personally would like to wait.
But let's transfer the money. I think that's probably the biggest.
If you transferred in there, can you take it back out and put it back in the general fund or where is it right now? It's in the general fund.
Then it'd be in the fund balance.
So what happens if we leave it there versus move it over to equipment reserve?
So. Definitely when you put it into equipment reserve, you're marking that money for, for.
We can, we can apply it towards a snowplow though.
Right, we could apply it towards something else.
And if something came up that we needed to have funds back in general reserve, how does that work?
You're. We're built, we're trying to build the general reserve too, so we can have that. Uh, can you move it? I believe you can. I would need to confirm proper way to.
Think we do the general first though.
Typically you go. Or like say when you go. But reserve, use up that money, then you can use fund balance. But tip into general fund reserve, unless you really need to go into fund balance before that.
Would, would these extra funds that we're talking about have more flexibility if we just left them into the, left them in the general fund? Or in the, that like we're putting fifty thousand in reserve?
So you can only have so much. Fund balance. And at any given time, you're capped at around seventy-five percent of your operating, your overall budget.
Okay.
Can be put into your fund, you can have your fund balance come that new year. Um, so by putting it in reserves, it gives you a lot more flexibility. Also for equipment, it isn't a bad thing to have. Funds in there more than what you have committed for other items in the future. It's just a, we do, it takes time to get there.
Or maybe putting the money like we're putting that fifty thousand in the general reserve, then we, we would have flexibility. To put it in there and move it over to equipment later if we decided we wanted to move forward on it.
Think we can, can we transfer?
I would suggest, well, you would like to be down with your funds, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
But if you're to put money into equipment reserve, it doesn't hurt to put that three hundred thousand in there. It gives you flexibility. You don't use a person we per. Like discussion earlier was you can have the money set aside then for that snowball truck setup. Plus you have a little bit there for other equipment if we need it. Or if we need another vehicle or, like I said, or a.
Cause you're gonna need to replace things.
Things that have to be replaced.
And then you would just come back to council with additional purchase requests out of the climate reserve.
Yeah.
I, I kind of personally want to wage on a street sweeper being as we only have somewhere like, you know, a couple, five a year. Sorry, that's just.
You can sweep the. It's okay if you go on a way.
I'm gonna recommend that we move it. We don't, okay, I'm fine with not getting a street sweeper, but I'm thinking we should move that money into the equipment fund so that we do have. Reserves there because we are going to need equipment even if it's not the street sweeper. There are going to be other things that we're going to be needing. So you wouldn't make this recommendation if it wasn't, you're going to be looking at having to do so.
Are you moving the money?
I am, as long, as long as, I mean, there has to be council approval for additional equipment purchases. Or something happens that we need to pull this money out of equipment reserve and utilize it for some other unforeseen issue in another fund.
I don't know if we're allowed to. Can we move it out of there?
It sounded like we couldn't. Or did, I'm sorry.
Well, but what you would do likely, if you need funds, could you have your fund balance?
Yep.
For general fund. So you most likely would be dipping into your fund balance before dipping into like equipment reserve, general fund reserve. Depending on the situation, general fund reserve, they'd be a pretty rare situation in touch with your general fund reserve.
Okay.
So if you had. Dip into any sort of fund, say we had to go buy, go buy a new snowplow. There's different accounting, we'll say that for. So let's say you have to buy a piece of equipment because it's thirty thousand dollars, you got a hundred thousand available in your reserve. You could exhaust that equipment reserve, so choose. And then you pull the rest from the fund balance through our budget amendment. So those are different means to do that. Um, this is a, you do, I come to you guys with purchases like of this nature. Street sweeper, for example, snowplow, towards the end of the year. If we've had revenues exceed budget expectations. And that's typically your building permits because also they do have some variability tied to them. We may have. Quite a bit of revenue tied to building permits because it's commercial one year and then next year you might not have or anything. Year after that, you can have a whole bunch, take all the waves.
Okay, what you guys want to do?
Any, any questions on the general fund expenditures in, we can recap that in just a minute. I just want to touch base on the highway fund real quick. Highway fund here. Being changes here really tied to. Like, probably works been busy. Dual costs are higher, electricity for streetlights. We didn't have that as individual line item called out before. We had electricity and we had twenty-two thousand budget for electricity, however. That I believe was originally for streetlights. Electricity for streetlights were around forty-five thousand dollars. So that's a big change right there. Other changes. Snow removal damages, for example, we had budgeted two thousand, we had almost seventy-five hundred dollars in snow removal. Images that would be like mailboxes or. Fence, things like that. Another area, of course, yeah, would be professional services. That could be trying different things. A lot of times a street patch will come from our. Sales tax fund, but it could be a variety of different services. Professional services, actually, that would be like your sweeping costs. That probably is majority of your cost right there is sweeping services. The professional services for the highway fund. And then the last area is we had originally budgeted. Certain mall for salaries and all the cost type due positions for pellet works. Now we've added. Positions. Also, the breakout percentages between water sewer and highway fund. What was entered in versus what's followed, different. For our highway fund, we had a, we have a fund balance that was around two eighty thousand. That's short holder, we could spend on the highways fund and still be in. Lines with our middle fund balance policy. So what we want to do is make sure we want to spend on fund balance a little bit in highway fund. Why? Gives us greater flexibility with our general fund. Rather have the highway fund, fund balance spent down. To be around that twenty-five to thirty percent, around that twenty-five to thirty-five percent range. Where. Keep the most flexibility in general fund. So we're trying to do. Because then if things come up, we're not restricted. Highway fund is restricted fund. I can't just pull money from the highway fund, people will buy it on a project or whatever. So that's why.
Do you need a motion for the budget amendments or?
Budget, I'd be looking for approval of the budget amendment and then what I add on here for those different costs, what I understand. Is possible, that's not long before with a sweeper at this time. However, still put that money aside into the equipment reserve. So it'd be just as reflected here, just not important of that, but other items, so the miscellaneous items. Street signs into a special projects user downtown neighborhoods, plan into a special project. Fund. And then play funds into general fund reserve, equipment reserve. That's what you like to do.
I don't support the fifty thousand dollars for the downtown plan, but I might be outvoted on that. I don't know if you want to vote on that separately. I, I support the rest of them. I support the pallets and the street signs and the fifty thousand in the reserve and the. Two hundred and fifty thousand into the equipment reserve fund.
Put your reserve.
Right?
No.
Oh, oh, three hundred. I'm sorry. I wrote the, yep, three hundred.
Reserve fund would be fifty thousand.
Yep.
Street signs is twenty-five thousand. This I am, it's twenty thousand.
I support tho, I support those four amendments, just not the downtown plan.
You can go ahead and make that motion. We can vote on another one separately.
So this, this could be approved as proposed. The exception of not purchasing a street sweeper.
Okay. Cause you're two, two separate deals here, right? Were you talking one? Well, that was one.
That was one. That's why I gave you a funny.
Okay, if he approve, like an amendment, one, highway fund and general fund. As proposed, minus purchase of a street sweeper, however, keeping those funds into. Play those funds into equipment reserve.
Right.
And just so you know that I'm, I'm in a vote no, only because this is not separated out the downtown plan. That's the only reason I'm, that's the only reason I'm voting no. It's okay. I mean, it's, it's up to you, but I just, that would be why I would vote no.
Can we just do two separate then?
You could do two separate if you want.
That way she can be on the record for voting for what she wants to vote for.
Okay, so do motion. Fund would be general fund. Highway. As proposed. Without purchase of sweeper. Removal. Fifty thousand for neighborhood plan.
All right. So does somebody want, somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Can I step in, I'll make the motion. Can I get a second?
Sure.
Can you only do a second? So all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, that's everybody on that one. Somebody want to make a motion for the fifty thousand?
Do, do we have to make a motion for the fifty thousand for that tonight or can we see how the?
You don't.
Can we see how it goes on the fifteenth?
You don't have to, however, like you were talking about earlier.
Yep.
It does show that you have net availability or you're willing to back up a local match because if it comes to. My experience is working in MPO world is if I have two grant applications for the pot of money. Want to provide, guarantee me I got local match or for the, hey, I have local match for us, another one can't. I might find one that can definitely back up the dollars. So if you show, hey, we have the dollars there. You stand by our chance. Yes, there's uncertainty of the local dollars. And so your competition is.
I personally think we wouldn't even have to, we'd have to contribute something for sure.
Yeah.
Well, you have to do the, the grant, the eighty.
It depends if you get the grant. So you have to do eighty, twenty matching the CPG dollars for Metro Pot. However, but our overall plan is, is to, if we could get the CPG, we get partners in the planning grant. It can match each other.
Yeah, and then we wouldn't have to spend it is.
However, it's kind of like the water project. So Jeff was talking about, we had to show commitment that we'd be able to do it and that we would do it. However.
I have a feeling that we'll get the grant money and it'll just be a wash.
That way it's against them.
Yes, well, would, that's the point. You can't get that, but need a fallback position here.
Have the done, this all been fall, fallen in place before? Yes. It's like on the water projects, we had to create a special assessment measure for the water projects. However.
We didn't use it.
No intentions to using that. But it was a, we had to jump through from the state water commission to show that we are serious about making the project.
I have faith that we could get the funds.
And I think we, it's a program of the state, of verges communities, for state advantage. But, yeah, I don't know the result of that application process.
Jeff, you want to go with it or let it go?
The challenge we have is we have the funds available. If you do it later on, other time, then you're pulling from like fund balance. Yeah, funds available. It's a little weak, that's why.
I think we will get it, just to be honest. Um, it's just that leap of faith. So. I'll make a motion to, uh, to approve that fifty thousand dollars for that.
I don't disagree with that. I think we'll get it too, with this kind of like this, a fallback position in case it doesn't, so. All right, Jeff makes a motion. Can I get a second? Okay, he only does a second. All right, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, Brenton, you got the Cass County Food Commission appointment.
Okay. Hey, I didn't know, I'm not sure.
Somewhat, yes.
Okay, this one here is. Um. Metrocon is looking for an appointment from the city for Cass County Food Commission. So they meet monthly, I believe, talk about healthy food options and availability of that within the community.
That's about.
Yeah, Metrocon for some reason, it's a station group, I don't know. Yeah, so anyways.
It's under them, no?
Yeah, Metrocon facilitates it and acts there.
When the hell did that happen?
I don't.
I must have not paid attention to that. I mean, that didn't.
So that one I have not, they used to be separate, the Cas County. Ever expanding, huh?
So anyways. Yeah, any council members that like to.
Yeah, seriously.
On that appointment. Looking for appointments of it, otherwise Jason says, I don't know, fall entirely or fall told or what. As offered, say, you're a bit seen. If none of the council members like to be on that food commission, he has.
Yeah, that was not gonna fight you for it.
I'm not gonna fight you apart either, Jase.
Sorry, I was gonna throw Sarah under.
Always, yeah.
I mean, you always should.
That's okay. Um, I'll make a motion to appoint Jase. To that. Cass County. Mission. Thanks, Jase.
I'll second.
I'm gonna give a second, okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 But let's.
Jase, you're it dude.
Let's tell Sarah that we did get her appointed to that. So she thinks she can add that to her plate.
You go right ahead. She might come and talk to you.
Okay.
Brenton, go to fifteen. Keep moving here.
This one here, Sally, we're, we were so unable to get on, oh, you got.
I have it on my phone already.
I've asked Sally to give her run through of the living local app since she's been involved with the. Company there. To develop this. Please keep in mind that. This is, it's established, however, we're still having common tool. It's going to be evolved. But, uh, she'll be able to run through a living mobile app. This is one of the rare times that I would encourage you to have yourself homes out. So, very good counseling.
So. We're having a mission person getting announcements out and, um. Came across this app. It's living local. It's based out of this mark through Captain Company. Um. So if you go to your app stores, if you wanted to download it, it's really easy to find. You just, um, search for Horace and the. Um. Once you have it. That's what it looks like. That's the yellow logo that you will see on the app store. Then you get the welcome page and you have different options. You got the health and wellness. Uh, which is the North Dakota Department of Health. Um, and then there's a living local network through that. Um, with, I, I actually got like alerts already for that, so. The next one would be, um. Here, what do we have next? I'm not, I can't really, so, um. Okay, yeah, so community walls. You can post jobs, you can, you know, put things for sale, list for homage sales. Any kind of information that you want to share with them. Um, and it's all worse centered and the job postings would actually come through the city. So it would come through me and then I would have to approve them and then, um, just hit post on the web or on the app. Um. Next one would be. So that's the, um. Oh, sorry. I was hoping that I could have gone through this. Bye, but. Um. So that is under, there's a more tab. Um. There, I mean, as you can see, there are different places to click on here. Um, if you keep scrolling down to bottom, you've got, uh, churches, um. Churches, different businesses. You have a list of all the businesses. It's even got, um. Like this, you. It's got like, oh, looks to be fire department, um. Back on the homepage, there is actually a place where you can go to the school and you can stream school events. Um, and you can see their school feed, their athletics, their lunch menu. So parents can go there and, um, search for any information. Um. See, we've got weather, we've got, um, the local. And then I think the, the biggest thing would be for the alerts and updates where we could actually let people know if there are. Um, road closures or water outages, um, any other kinds of important information that right now. It's coming through the website and I don't even get the alerts from the website. Like I didn't get the one that I, that I sent out two weeks ago. So it's kind of spotty. This seems to be pretty smooth because this is actually what it's made for. And it's not a website trying to be an alert system. This is actually. An alert system.
And so you have to keep it updated then?
Yeah.
So like you update the school?
No, no, everything is like, so it'll be, the school information is updated through the, just through their website just because. Um, however, they can figure that. Um, and then they do that too with our, um, calendar, our events calendar. Right now, um, we saw that it goes directly to October, but I think that's just because that's where they, it's always. Of them changing and updated.
On the city calendar. So if you click on it, upcoming events, the calendar there. It'll give you the city's website or we have calendar events there. The Saturday is talking about goes to October. That's so maybe it to be current month, but. This app redirects you to. Different websites like the school. It pulls information off their website, which may be easier to find. It'll tell you having kids, the school information there. That's pretty neat. And where you click lunch menu is, it's just a little sidebar thing, but you click that and you can find out what your kids are eating. It's just trying to.
The elementary?
I don't know for sure. I haven't clicked around enough in that. But, uh, it'll tell you different information throughout the community. That's the whole intent of it is to share. Information of different things happening and engagement wise. So you have the churches, you have the school. You got the businesses, the business directory. It's trying to give you a lot of the consolidated information. One thing I certainly need is on the business directory. Uh, was that you could call?
As it's, as they screen finish it and say, you can call. You know, just like you can off of Google.
Yeah, it's, it's all right there.
If you're trying to support local, like those local businesses, hey, I can't find the number for. This, Dairy Queen. Or Red River Plumbing. There it is. They're on there and.
And those businesses can also put their like weekly ads and deals on there. So. It, it just seems like, I, I was really excited because I got the notification that it was, um, small business Saturday. You know, I was like, I was like, kind of like that that was already working. We, I haven't done much with it yet because. We've been rolled it out or anything, so.
I love, it's, it's looks great. I like it.
So our cost in this was pretty minimal. It's less than a thousand dollars.
Seven hundred dollars. And so they also, um, uh, with the package are going to be giving us a fifty inch TV. It's a living local network and they'll have our advertisements on there and it's, and that we could. But if anywhere we want to, it's out of, you know, if anybody's willing to have their, their business, there's a lot of people use gas stations, but. But if we wanted to do that. Be good.
Cool. Well, it's nice to see that.
Good job, Sally.
It gives, gives people another option to stay informed.
Oh, again, and I like it because there's no immutability to get up again.
That'd be nice.
Each other.
Yeah.
It's literally, it's all information.
Do you envision, um, like the note, the notification page from the website? Being pushed to, to here? You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Okay, more reliable, you feel like?
I feel like it.
Okay.
So if this, this thing can pull information from the schools, cause also can it also pull information from our website? Or the notifications where you don't have to manage it then?
Um. I believe she said, you know, that we just have to put everything separately.
Cool.
But.
It, it is evolving. It'll need to build it up obviously, but we have the framework there. Now it's getting information and it's also evolving.
Okay, did they got any other question? Thank you, Sally.
Sally.
All right. Jim. Lucas, are you even awake over there dudes? They're gonna pick on you tonight at all. Wow. Next time, man. Go ahead, Jim, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Just want to make sure he's awake over there.
They're, they're, continues along. They're gonna rip it down. Whether it doesn't allow them to, but we, it starts last Tuesday, pre coming about Thursday. Um, and when you do the same, it's working even more. Any longer, um, pretty much everything else is stopped. We saw there was some substantial completion that came across. Through the consent agenda, some semi fighting laws, we still, throughout the project, we've gotten a bit of it on. Some of the.
What, what's Excel going on wall? Where are they at? There still seems like pipe and stuff. And all that. Right, that's why I'm wondering, what's the story on that?
I, I have.
They were both about down here. Ask Purge, I heard was last week, but I don't know where that's at.
Exactly. That's why I'm just wondering, there's still pipe laying around and they got, I mean, they got the purge tanks out there now. So I mean, I gotta be getting a little closer, but.
We pushed back, um, quite a bit here. Be pushed back, um, quite a bit here, where they're trying to cold swallow or an opener, just every day, and not have anybody out there. Not gonna do that.
Right.
And, uh, that'd be so dumb.
Question on, um, Maple Lakes, you said that's shut down now? Do they still have dump trucks running off there?
No, he's, there's that one, there's still.
Okay.
But, uh, far as, I'm becoming a first best. Uh, designed to be, we didn't actually, the sixty-six streets, that would be really important. So, yeah. Sixty-third. Of the. Nine sixty-six. Um. Or problem.
Okay, cool. Any questions?
Thank you.
Brenton, you're next.
My instructor, Matt Holt, and Sarah just made.
All right. All right, portfolio reports, I got, tomorrow I'm going out to Bismarck for League of Cities, uh, Board of Directors meeting. Um, I'm gonna give them that, uh, daycare presentation that we did at the church, and I'm gonna give them a quick abbreviated version of that, so that the board understands where that was coming from. Um, we're also gonna be having conversations about the Homestead Credit Act, I found out that Judy Lee is getting behind that, and she wants that updated, it hasn't been updated in years. I think numbers need to change, so some other, more people qualify for, especially the elderly, that's what this is geared towards, so. We're gonna be having that conversation, uh, we have some other legislative objectives that we're gonna be going after. Um, and the policy committee is gonna be reporting, and I'm on that committee, so. I'm gonna try and get together with Mayor Dartis, um, we'll talk about that nine street thing, it's just, we haven't been able to sync up on times yet, but we'll keep working on that. That's it, so Sarah's done. Naomi, what you got?
Jayce, but into COVID, like, it's just so great, you know, had to.
Yeah, I'm supposed to be sitting here like this?
No.
Okay.
Had to cancel, so I think we're gonna try to. Please, Mark? Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, otherwise, yeah, I've been kind of out because of that, so.
Okay, we'll stop that. All right, Stephanie, what you got?
Um, we have holidays coming up this Saturday, Sally's been hard at work at that, so come out and enjoy some vendors and some activities for the kids. Um, we've been hard at work on our hundred and fiftieth meetings, um, I think. I feel pretty good about the groups we have together for the different evenings, and I was looking for volunteers, if anybody else is interested in, in helping, so that's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Jeff, what you got?
Um, I don't have a lot for, uh, the HR side. Uh, MetroCog's meeting today got postponed due to sickness of, uh, Miss Gray, that'll be picked up again on Friday. Now they're not, that is it.
Okay, perfect, let me look for a motion to adjourn.
Aye, motion to adjourn.
Stephanie, motion, is gonna get a second? Naomi does a second, all in favor say aye.